Oh, what's that?
Uh, yes, please.
Chris, would you like to...
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, not right now.
Yeah.
Thanks. Todd Ward.
Here.
Greg Nelson.
Here.
Tom Jordan.
Here.
Dick Samples.
Here.
Paul Stewart.
Yes.
Jason Hill.
Here.
Harry Jennings.
Here.
Stacy Pinkerton. John Gaudel. Chris Norton.
Here.
John Green.
Here.
Tim Mann.
Here.
Rich Evans.
Cheers.
Tiffany Dieter. Rob Kraut.
Here.
All right, we have a statement of votes cast. We have a total... We'll wait on you, chief. We had a total of 1,288 votes cast. Mr. Norton received 157 votes. Ms. Slavin received 111 votes. Mr. Ward received 303 votes. Ms. Pinkerton received 92 votes. Mr. Jordan received 351 votes. Mr. Hill received 222 votes. And Mr. Stewart received 52 votes. And of course, the winners being Mr. Ward, Mr. Hill, and Mr. Jordan. And now, we're going to do the oath of office and the seating of our new trustees. Before we do it, I'm sorry. One moment. We do have a certificate of appreciation. We only have one of the trustees here, so, Mr. Norton. Sorry.
Camera Tiffany.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Play with it.
Shake again. It's fast.
She wants your...
Oh, you want the picture.
There you go.
One more.
Pretty much.
Tiffany? Could you do it kind of in... Megan, I'm sorry.
Tiffany's over there.
I know. I guess you look like a Tiffany man. Could you do it right there, so it's in front of that camera, so if anybody wants to watch it?
Okay.
Mr. Jordan? What? Sorry.
Shouldn't they do it all at the same time?
No, 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 order it down. But what? No, I guess none. Whichever.
Sure, we'll do it all at the same time.
Yeah, all at the same time. That's all the same office, yeah.
You want to do it collectively or...
Yes, all together.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Same time.
Sorry, I was thinking different offices.
No, that's, that would be different.
Yes, all at the same time.
All at the same time.
All at the same time.
Camera's mine. You gotta turn around this way, so you're up in the camera.
Okay, not blocking, right? Okay. Page 39. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the oath of, sorry, of the Office of Trustee...
Of the Office of Trustee.
Of the Village of South Jacksonville.
The Village of South Jacksonville.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Yeah.
Now, it's...
Yeah, they're getting those stuff.
Okay.
I was gonna say.
Don't leave them.
No, they're not leaving. Mr. Hiller's the book, so I gave you.
Okay. Well... He wanted, he wanted that seat, so...
What's that?
He wanted that seat, so I'm not gonna take it from him.
That's fine. The newly elected officials' book is the main, here you go, is the main book.
Okay.
The mayor may.
Just the sign, not the holder. Usually gets sat in the corner.
I think we gotta send that back down.
Yeah. Oh, keep grabbing the holder, too. Who needs it? Jason. There you go.
I'm good here.
Now, we're good.
How do you do, Rob?
Good, how are you? Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, on the agenda, we need to scratch number three. Jump in the gun there. We're gonna actually, we approved the amount last month, and then this next month, we'll probably have that out for bid. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, so...
Next Tuesday, we have to...
Yeah. So, motion to approve the agenda...
We have number three now.
So, what's that?
Which one is it?
Uh, the motor fuel tax. We already approved that amount.
Okay, okay.
So, that is, didn't need to be on there.
You need to wait and see when the bids come in, and then that's what we'll accept next month.
Yeah. So, absent any other corrections or additions?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to remove item 10 from action items.
The advertising? Okay, you wanna make a motion to approve the agenda without action, without number 10 on it?
I'll second.
Okay, without number 10 and without number three?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All approve, same side. All right, comments from the floor?
So, all of you have at U.S. first area of Little Grease Little Potato. And so, my name is Sandy, and this is my husband Brad Eaton. We are co-coordinators of a summer food program called Take It to the Streets. And we realized a few years back that there were kids who were going summer long with, without any nutritious lunches. We, this will be our third year. We have been successful in that the first year, we did 8,700 lunches. Last year, we did over 16,500 lunches. So, we decided to branch out. Each year, we get a little bigger. And so, we came over and I talked to the coordinator over across the street of the apartment complex. I talked to the school secretary. And I spoke several times with Mr. Chipman, the school principal. And there is a definite need here in the South Jacksonville area for lunches. So, what we do is, on weekends, starting Sunday, June the 9th, we start Sundays at 4:00, because a lot of people wanna go to Concert in the Park. And then, Tuesday, or Monday through Thursday, we will be starting at 5:30. We start at Grace Methodist Churches where we're located. We start in a circle. We tell them what the lunches are, what we're packing. We pack the lunches. We have a table assigned to each site. And we fill up the sack lunches at each site as a container, put them in the refrigerator. The next day, volunteers go, take out the container, and take it to the sites. This year, we'll be a Walnut Housing Unit, Bass, Greenbrier Apartments, Northwood Trailer Park, Monaco, Monaco Village, Washington School, and South Jacksonville Elementary. So, we'll be along there. We'll probably pick a shade tree. So, our volunteers go, they pick up those sack, the container, they'll bring it, put it under a shade tree, and people will come. We had over 352 volunteers last year. We were overwhelmed. The community has been awesome. They have been so good to help us. We had, I believe, 12 churches come. We've had the Rotary, and the Kiwanis, and the Paddle Club. So, this is something that definitely, there is a need in the community for the Jacksonville area. There are certain areas where a high number of the students receive free or reduced lunches. These are healthy sack lunches with fresh fruit, fresh veggies. We have like broiling and cauliflower, and we have ranch dressing for them to dip in it. We have celery and carrots, and we have peanut butter. The biggest meal, of course, is peanut butter and jelly. And we are done in about an hour and a half tops. We can get it all done. Ages from 3 to 98. Dorothy's 99 now, help us. And if you can't stand, we will have you sit down. And we get popcorn from the theaters on Wednesday nights. So, Thursday, we're putting popcorn in bags. We do Goldfish and pretzels. We just, we do it all. Healthy sack lunches, and that's all we are, is just providing free of charge for kids. I think last year, we had one family that went to two sites. And we were like, they need the lunch that bad, give it to them. We found the first year that the kids were actually hoarding some of the lunches and telling us, well, this is my lunch for tomorrow. So, that's why on Fridays, we give extra on Fridays. They get a boiled egg and salad and yogurt or gogurts on Friday, along with other. So, if you come on Wednesday nights, you might be asked to peel, help peel 300 or so eggs. Our first week, the day we first, 165. By the end of that week, we were 225. By week three, we were at 350. And then, for four weeks, or three weeks, we did do 415 lunches a day. That came, it went down a little. We do special need kids who attend summer school. We also do kids who attend the Salvation Army Day Camp. So, we do a variety. We do home deliveries to some because the kids live too far. Some kids can't leave their yards. And we know that, but we don't publicize it. So, we have our volunteers. So, you can be a night volunteer or a day volunteer. We do need lots of day volunteers. You do have to have, go through police background check. We ask, we give you a shirt to wear because kids recognize the shirt. And it's just a good experience. If you come at night, wear a hat, or else we might have a pretty little net hat for you to wear. And they're kind of expensive, so I'm very tight with the money. Last year, eggs here at Aldi's was $132. And over in Springfield, they were $0.42 a dozen, so I was going over there to buy the eggs. So, we get the best buy is what we do. If watermelon's on sale, we're having watermelon that day. And it's every day for nine weeks, and it kind of consumes you. So, we ask that you come just even, just to get the experience, because we had 300 volunteers. So, we need people to come and help us. And you were one that helped us last summer. And it's just a great experience, and it's something that we feel that in South Jacksonville, the kids will definitely benefit. And so, that's our food program.
So, we're also having a fundraiser to go Saturday, June 1st. It's at the Ferris wheel.
The community park.
Yeah, the Noon Rotary is, is helping us. And they're gonna have Ferris wheel rides for us, but we're having pork chops, chips, and soda for $5 donations.
Right. So, and we're all, it's all donations, and somebody says, well, it's Grace. No, we wanna make sure everyone's clear. It's not just Grace. Grace is, has the kitchen, has the equipment we could use. It is a community working together. It's not Grace's baby. It's a community working together. And so, that is our program. We are out of Grace. But again, if you have any questions, and our email is tothestreets2018@gmail.com, or call the church secretary at Grace. You have any questions about it?
Yeah.
Yes!
You keep track of the kids that come every day.
We have numbers. We don't throw privacy. Someone asked us, well, why don't we send them Christmas cards? Could you know where you delivered them? I'm like, no, confidentiality, and we respect the kids. Also, kids can help at night. We have lots of kids come help at night, but they are not allowed to help us during the day because it can be their classroom. And the awkwardness. And also, kids are like, the living conditions of some of these children. So, we ask that kids only who graduated high school can help do the day deliveries. But at night, everybody. We had up to 60 people one night, and then the next night, we only had 12. Kids are like, oh, you had plenty of help. And so, nobody came back the next day.
Do you provide a drink?
No, we, they're too messy. The first year, we tried milk, and they didn't want it. The second year was apple juice and other, and they just didn't seem to, it was a waste.
We have water.
We do have water. We had some...
We did have water this year. They will, in bottles.
Yeah, we're trying to get some more donations, because they really like the wa, water. And when it's really hot, they just wanna get their lunch and go home. Sadly, we wake up a lot of kids because there's nothing for them to do.
What's your name again?
Brad and Sandy Eaton is our names.
Do you know the church's number?
It's on the other one.
245-9521.
245-9521.
But we're just, it's just a, you know, a summer program, and it's something that we enjoy doing. And we'll be doing it until school starts back, and today is the 4th of July.
I think it's great.
Well, we enjoy doing it.
The church is here to...
Oh, there's lots of kids. Right, and so on Fridays, we have extras. We have our bags full. But we will put you to work, and we'd love to have everyone come out and help us. And if you know of areas, because see, we, we're just doing South Jacksonville this year, but there may be other targeted areas or apartment complexes that I, because I'm not from here. And I don't really know, but if you know, there is like 10 families living in this, there's...
If there's a need somewhere, let us know, so we can fill that.
Right. And again, it's, we don't know the names. The kids will tell us their names, but we hold that respect, you know, because it is kind of hard for some guys.
Where do you get your water from? No, I'm just kidding.
Well, we've got some...
Pepsi, Pepsi donated some this year.
Right. Sam Sheets, he's a gentleman who's helped me write grants for like, Diet Food and Walmart. And he's been wonderful, because I haven't had to do that. But he's gotten some for us, so. But it means we can be 400 a day again.
When do you put the sandwiches in?
They are in Ziploc bags or baggies, because we've got some bags. The rentals were great, but for just an egg, or just for small things, we use baggies.
But you can use, like, whole-size bags and stuff?
Yeah, they're, of course, they're...
I'll get them.
The baggies.
How can I get ahold of you?
217-322...
It should be on the front of...
3239. Same. And leave a text, because I have to have my phone on during the day. But, yeah, we're from Roseville. But anyways, just, it's a program that we really feel that's necessary here in the South Jacksonville area, and we look forward to coming over here. And we've already got two days filled, because it's strictly volunteers. They call me, say, I can do it on Thursdays. I'll be there on Wednesdays, or whatever day. They go, they pick up the lunches, they come, and they'll hand out the lunches. It only takes about 20 minutes, because you've got food sitting there, and you need to get it out. We don't take any meals back. If we only have, we have 40 lunches, and only 30 kids show up that day, because they're, they're good about doing that. We have families that we know, and we will literally take the lunches to those families, because we don't take any meals back. We don't have the room.
We don't have the room to store it.
So, we just, and we know families that have meals.
How many meals do you give out a day? Well, last year, we were doing 400.
415.
Probably the highest number. But, you know...
Then it went down to 325, which is a nice number.
Right. But, you know, that's, refrigerators faces our biggest problem.
Because you have those containers, and you gotta put them in each, you know...
And it works so much easier to do it at night, because you have a lot more volunteers, more people are available to help us at night than, because everybody, most, most people work, so.
And like, Blue Cross World Shield's gonna be coming on Monday nights to help us. And Diversified Crop Insurance, they're gonna be coming on Thursday nights to help us. So, you know, and they're like, six of this, and so if I know six of this company, or six of this organization, I'll put them together. So, we have more, a good number is 35. That's a good number to have each time. Okay, well, thank you.
All right, I think...
Yes, any other questions? Okay, and we look forward to coming out to justice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Regular session minutes from Thursday, April 4th, 7:00 p.m. Motion to approve those minutes. Absent any additions or corrections?
Same.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side.
I abstain, and I wasn't prepared for that either, so.
Understand. Accounts payables for April 2019. Motion to approve the accounts payables.
We need just a moment of discussion on this. We're two good guys. There's, where's it at? So, we're here, right there? Every month, this is passed around, and all the checks that...
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped the, yeah, I did. I'm sorry, treasurer's report first. Yeah, but, but yes.
But always, you're more than welcome to look through these. There is a master list right off the bat.
This one.
That, but there's also one on the front sheet, and they ask you to assign that to you, where you approve that payables for that month.
The check register in the front, it shows you the three amounts that we've paid. And then, if you, if you wanna go further with it, the invoice will be in the back. Like, if a lot of times, it's easier to look at the check register, and if you see anything that you wonder what it is, all of them will be in there.
Yeah. But this is something that's never explained.
I was told about this.
Right.
Look through there and then sign off on it.
So, you actually have to look through them and then sign it.
Sometimes, some things have come up between...
And Tiffany, are there sometimes where there's extra checks in here that are not in printed that we get? Yes, you guys should be aware of that, too.
What's that? I don't, they didn't hear you.
And you guys have this printed? But this is not always the same, so you should always look through that. There's some additional.
We do that at the end of the meeting?
Well, this is printed...
Yeah, you wanna make sure you have toggled through that.
You got, yeah.
The first page, well, anything that's listed on the first page that you sign on, any manual checks will not show on the invoice report that you did before the meeting.
This one.
Anything on that that's showing the manual checks is near to you, and it'll be the first time you see anything's meeting.
And it's on this page, so, but you've gotta look at both. Yeah.
But I jumped the gun there. First, we need to approve the treasurer's report for March 2019. Motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Same.
A second, please.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side.
I abstain, and I'm not a trustee of March.
True.
Now, the accounts payables. Let me get to my part that I gotta read here. I'm not stapling together, so. General fund checks, we had $306,709.63. Tiff checks, we had $4,146.50. Motor fuel tax checks, we had $117. Total tourism manual checks, we had $6,523.72. Water and sewer deposit checking refund, we had $530 issued. Manual checks for April 2019, $11,222.22. Total for April payables, $317,909.85. Motion to approve the April...
Tiffany, what do you do, because they haven't looked at it yet?
I mean, you're really worried about passing the new ones, so I think it's up to the night, and I'll have to call them.
Because I'm guessing that three new ones wouldn't wanna vote, because they haven't looked at that mask yet. I don't know, I'm just guessing. Do you guys feel comfortable?
I can call roll call if you want.
Yeah.
Call roll call, please.
I don't have a motion, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Abstaining.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
I guess we ought to abstain, too, because it wasn't in there.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Abstaining.
But I need to vote with only three?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm gonna give a yes, so I have four.
That way, you guys are covered, because you haven't looked at it yet.
Thank you.
But the next time you come in, if you have a question, just stop and ask.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Tiffany will answer anything.
How late are you here on Wednesday?
It always varies, but if you let me know, we can always set a time.
Okay, thank you.
My arms. I'm flexible.
On the mayor's report, we're gonna jump ahead a little bit and do the water study. Grabbing this information. There we go.
We've got copies here for everybody. How you doing?
How you doing?
I got... No, I missed her, didn't I?
Thank you. I got it. They passed them down. Just take one of these ones.
Thank you.
My name is Anthony Miller. I'm in the Hacks and the D area. And we've entertained by the, we're a team by the village to do a study on your water rates. And this is a compilation of that study. I'll just go through it briefly, and I won't get too particular here, but kind of go through, just walk you through what we did. Purpose of the study was basically to evaluate the adequacy of your existing water rate, as I'm saying right now. You guys have two different kinds of water service rates. One is a water service only, which is on your transmission line over from town to town, a long way. Before it gets into town and is treated, there's water service only rate, water service only customers off of that. And once it gets into South Jacksonville, you have water and sewer service customers. So, there's two different kinds of customers. And then, you also have bulk rate customers, too, which would be your rural water companies that you sell to. What we're studying is, what, what the purpose of this study was, to see the adequacy of your water only and your water and sewer rate customers. So, one thing that did make this thing a little bit confusing, there in the late section of section, or lateness in section one there, there is one of your rural Scott County accounts that is treated as an individual account, which is actually a high, a very high user of water in the village. Out of 80, there's 86 customers on your transmission line. Out of the 86 customers, this one customer accounts for about 80% of the water use. Usage out of the 86 customers. So, as I move through this, you're gonna see how, whenever we, whenever we average these customers out, it kind of makes the numbers skewed. So, I'm gonna move on to page two there. Out of all of your customers and all of your water and sewer customers, you've got 1,400 and some, 1,464 customers that are water and sewer customers within the, within the village that use an average of 4,430 gallons per month. And of the 86 customers that are on the transmission line, they use an average of 29,400 gallons per month. So, you can see that one very, very large user on the transmission line has the numbers skewed way up for your average, and your average uses of your customers on the transmission line. Does that make sense to everybody? Is it, anybody in courses there?
Tiffany, look, for me to understand is, how much water does this guy use? I know you said 80%.
There, it, it explains later in here. They use between, it's about 2 and 1/2 million. At one point, it said to 2.5 million gallons a year is what we...
Okay, well, this says per month.
Per month.
Per month.
Yeah, they, at the hog confinement.
I'm gonna say it, said it per month, yeah.
Yes, it does. So, they're very large users, where it said your average customer uses about 4,500 gallons. That's not just typical for South Jacksonville. We find that's typical for near the Alph community, so. Number's very skewed, skewed because of that one user. So, what we do, and we're evaluating these rates, is we look at two years' worth of financial data, and we had two years' worth of water usage data that we got from the city. So, out of that data, we pick out the categories, out of the financial data, we pick out the categories that would make up your water rate, such as your labor and your supervision of your equipment, your utility costs, your maintenance, supplies and expenses, any capital improvement costs that you may have, and the depreciation on your equipment. With the depreciation on your equipment being an account that would be saved up and used for replacing your equipment once it reaches the end of its useful life. So, out of all of the data that we received, we break down the, we break down all of your costs to your system being those five categories. We break them down into, and I'm on, on page three now. We break them down into three different categories. Debt cost, which is any kind of debt service payments you guys may have, which would be any kind of loan payments that we would have with regard to repairs made to your system. Fixed costs, which are typically your depreciation costs, your operating and maintenance costs, any sort of reserve accounts you may set up to save money for future improvements. And then, we also have proportional costs. Proportional costs are costs that vary from one month to another based on how much water is used. Your proportional costs would be electricity, any kind of supplies, maintenance of your system, office expenses, capital... office expenses, capital expenditures, things that if nobody used the system, i- if, basically one easy way to think about it is if your fixed costs are there, no matter if anybody turns on the water or not, your proportional costs drive up the cost based on everybody's usage. So whenever we look at this, whenever we look at water service rates, or sewer service rates, as far as that goes, we study those too, your fixed costs, as I said a minute ago, they remain the same regardless of how much usage you have, whereas proportional costs, they vary widely, they, they just vary depending on how much water you use. So whenever we look at a rates, whenever we look at rates, we typically see several components in rate studies and the more you break it down, the easier it is to understand, but your waters, your water service rate shown on the top of page four is only broken down into two categories, and it is one fixed cost rate and one proportional cost rate is broken down into, it's, it decreases per usage, the more water you use. Sometimes we see water rates that are broken down into a fixed cost and several, several proportional, or several proportional costs towards easy to see how your water rate is, comes about. But in your particular case, your fixed costs for your basic service rate for your water and sewer, your fixed cost is ten dollars and twenty cents. And along your transmission line for your water only customers is eleven dollars and two cents. Your proportional costs, and those, back, I wanna back up a little bit, those, your, your fixed costs are always for some minimum usage rate, in your particular case, it's two thousand gallons, so. Your water and sewer rate customers pay ten dollars and twenty cents for the first two thousand gallons, whether they use it or not. And your water service customers on the transmission line, they pay eleven dollars and two cents, whether they use two thousand gallons or not. Then after, once they, once they use over two thousand gallon, the rate is, your, the rate is added on to the ten dollars and twenty cents or the eleven dollars and two cents, depending on their usage. So again, to reiterate, your ten twenty is your fixed cost, or your eleven oh two is your fixed cost. Everything above that, beyond that is a proportional cost. So one of the things that is also a component of your water sewer rate would be a debt service charge. You guys don't have a debt service charge right now, uh, but you could have, as you, you know, I know there's been some talk about possibly there's some improvements to your water system, you may have a debt service cost once you incur a big project like that. So what we found after we analyzed your, the data, your, your data, uh, water usage data and your expenses data, what we found was, on average in twenty-six and twenty-seventeen, your average operating expenses were five hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. But whenever, on the top of page five, you can see whenever we run how much money you're collecting, you're only collecting about four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars a year. So based on what we found, your water service collections are running about fifty thousand dollars short. And I, your, your water service collections are running about fifty-three thousand dollars short. So in our opinion, the data shows that your water service rates are running a little low. So on page six, the purpose of the study was basically just to, uh, show you guys whether your water rates were in line with what you're spending or not, not necessarily to suggest that you make a water rate increase or not, just to do, do a random check to see if your water service rates are in line. What we're finding out, what we found out again is if you're a little bit low, uh, one thing that I wanna point out to you is, and it shows on the top of page six, as you, if you guys, uh, decide to borrow any money to do a project using I E P A interest rates as they are right now, one point eight four percent, to borrow a million dollars for ten years, the rate, the rate that you'd have to add to your water service would be six dollars and thirty-seven cents. That would be a debt service cost you'd have to add to your water service bill. So in summary, what we found was, uh, on page seven, what we find, what we found was, you thought your fixed cost needs to be adjusted about approximately four to five dollars a month. And your proportional cost is slightly low if you compare it to what you're actually charging on the, on the top of page three. So is everybody thoroughly confused on? Does anybody have a question?
Have you looked at other, I'm sure you have, other, uh, small towns, or what they're charging, is there anything reflects that in here?
Okay. No.
So this is just an individual?
It is an individual, it's based specifically on your expenses and your collections.
And this information?
One of the things that makes your, your particular water rate difficult to analyze is your water and sewer accounts are combined together, so you have one account for water and sewer. So one of the things we had to do as part of this exercise was take your expenses and decide how to pull them out and allocate them to the wa- allocate the proper ones to the water system and the proper ones to the sewer system. So we made some assumptions in that regard, in our opinion of doing these, on which expenses apply to your water and which expenses apply to your sewer. It's not overly difficult in your case, because you guys have, uh, Jacksonville services your sewer, so you don't have a lot of maintenance on your system like you would if you had your own sewer plant. But in the future, if you, whenever you choose to, if and when you choose to borrow money to do a project, one of the things that would have to be done as part of that exercise would be to do an actual rate study. It would be required before you got any I E P A funding, that's one of the conditions of funding, you have to actually do a rate study and show that your, your water rates are enough to maintain your system and you have enough to take a loan. One of the things that would have to be done at that time, whenever you actually did a rate study, that, did a study to recommend actual rates for a project like that, is there would have to be more data analyzed to separate amount of, what your expenses are going towards your water and what expenses are going to go towards your sewer. But in our opinion, we're pretty close.
Uh, okay, so on, you know, you, you said you were doing assumptions as far as how much, is it, it's hard to separate the water and the sewer?
Right.
Um, you know, how accurate is this?
Well, I can kinda tell you what we did to, you guys have, you're the same employees, your city employees take care of your water and your sewer, so we split the salaries in half. Employee benefits, we split in half, we allocated, whenever I say split in half, we allocated half the expense of water, half the expense of the sewer. Same thing with salaries, half the expenses to the water, half the expense to the sewer. Any supplies, we allocated all to the water, again, mainly because Jacksonville treats all your sewage, so your supplies should be somewhat minimal. Contractual services, which would be expenses by contractors, expenses by, by ourselves engineers, we allocated all to your water system. Once again, mainly because your sewer is all taken care of by Jacksonville. Your sewage contract, which is one of the expenses, we put it all a hundred percent towards sewage. And your depreciation, we put one hundred percent out against the water because all the equipment is for water. So we think we're pretty close already. But what I'm saying is, is we're looking at half a million dollars worth of data in a financial report done by your accountants that has everything summed up into six line items, basically. And, you know, there could have been a few thousand dollars allocated to the sewage system that we treated as water, but it shouldn't be a huge difference in what we have here. If that makes sense.
Yeah, and don't do that.
On page, okay, seven, eight, nine, let's say nine, total gallons served by water and sewer counts only. I'm assuming month one of January.
Yes.
Okay.
You recommend having the rural Scott County on a, uh, separate line?
We do.
Explain what that was.
We, we don't recommend.
On a separate, not a separate line, sorry.
We recommend them on a separate account.
Separate account.
Because all of your rural customers own accounts by themselves, and honestly, I don't know how and why this place is on an account like this, other than maybe in the beginning, it was, they were a small user.
They were, they were beginning.
Yeah, so they started out as a, just like another customer, maybe a, a, a commercial customer, and they've grown over the years, so. They may be, you know, they, they skew what we're looking at.
Right.
I don't know that, again, I don't know, ta- that taking them out is really gonna make a lot of difference in grades, but it would be easier to analyze how you charge your, your residential and your commercial users as opposed to your large water users.
My next question was for the, uh, I'm just looking at the water only rates and, and we fall off after a hundred thousand gallons. Does anybody in, keep increasing after that? I mean, is that, cause we're talking stopping, stopping the increases after a hundred thousand and they're using two and a half million, so.
Once again, typically a bulk rate would be looked at somewhat differently anyway, and I don't know how your other bulk customers are charged, because that wasn't part of what we were doing here.
Right.
But if you treated them as a bulk customer, you could set it up however you needed to set it up.
Okay.
I mean, typically, a residential or a commercial user wouldn't use, I mean, they could, but in a small community like yours, you wouldn't see large users like that. So it would be, there is a huge benefit to treating them as their own customer and setting, setting the rate up for them by themselves.
So bottom line is, we're losing about five, six dollars per customer.
Well, actually, four to five is what our opinion is.
Okay.
That's kinda hard.
Yeah.
That's on the water, we didn't study the sewer, obviously, they're all combined together, you know?
Right.
Yes, yes, that's what.
Yeah.
Our, in our opinion, well.
Well, I haven't seen that.
Yeah, you get the rate, the rate, the, uh, basic service charge for the bulk of your customers for the fixed rate is ten twenty. And for this exercise we did, we think it should be fourteen eighty-six, so we're looking at four dollars and sixty-six cents there. But if you look at proportional costs, which would be the amount over two thousand gallons, your rate is at three fifty-nine, and we're saying it should be three twenty, so one's a little high and one's a little low. But whenever you look at, most customers are only using four thousand gallons, you're talking about sixty, seventy cents difference in the rate, in your proportional rate. In other words, you, you got a thirty-nine cent difference per thousand gallons, so once a cus- if a customer uses, let's just say it's four thousand gallons, the first two thousand gallons is four dollars and sixty-six cents short. The next two thousand gallons is thirty-nine cents over. So if they use four, two extra, that's two thousand extra gallons, it would be seventy-eight cents.
Right.
So in one, your proportional cost is seventy-eight cents over, and your fixed cost, you're collecting three dollars and sixty-six, and, or four dollars, four dollars and sixty-six cents under, so it's about four bucks for those, for that group of folks. On the other, the other group of folks, it's about a dollar less than that. One of the benefits of doing an actual rate study too, th- this year, we're, we're looking at past data, the past two years worth of data. Our rate study, once you would do an actual rate study for some funding source or to reevaluate your rates, we would look at three to five years' worth of past data, and try to check, project it three to five years to set your rate, to set a rate structure up that you could modify over a period of three to five years. So this data is all existing, the rate study would project it out in the future. And if it was done in conjunction with a project, it would include a loan, most likely, which would give separate line item on your water, water rate. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on down the line here. Rural fire renewals, just a reminder for anybody that hasn't renewed theirs yet, they are due. Village cleanup days will be, uh, this coming June, seventh, eighth and ninth. Where does John at? No e-waste and?
No e-waste, no tires, batteries, no motor oils.
We'll, we'll have a sign up.
We'll have a sign up.
No e-waste, no, no motor oil, no batteries, no tires.
It'll be on our website.
Yeah, and it'll be on our website.
Gray is also putting something out with code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Yeah, so dummy, dudry, things out there, plus it'll be on the gate.
And then that'll be the same place it's always been down on, so. Summer sewer sign up, it's, uh, again, it's five dollars through the, uh, end of April and then, I'm sorry, it's five dollars through.
End of May.
End of May, and then, uh, let's see, it's free through end of April and then five dollars through end of May, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, and then end of May, it's cut off.
Yes. You sign up now, it'll cost five dollars to sign up.
Yes.
And April was free.
Yeah, April was free, I had all that on there, but I had to cut it off, cause I had too much on there. Without making the text a little smaller, I couldn't read it. The Godfrey Water Park Toyota will open this, uh, twenty-fifth, correct?
Yeah.
Twenty-fifth. And then building permits.
On the water park, is it on a limited basis again?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be, uh, Monday, Wednesday, Fridays and then the weekends, if Tuesday and Thursday are gone.
Okay.
Same hour as we had last.
And we've got a sign coming up that we're gonna put up there. We had seventeen building permits for a total estimated cost of two hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and five dollars, and total permit fees of nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Schedule a new committee meeting. How about the, uh, thirtieth, is everybody okay with that? That'd be the last Thursday of the month? No, you said it's on March, Justin.
No, mine was on March.
You said the thirtieth, Harry.
Uh, if that's okay with everybody.
Oh.
Is that gonna conflict any graduations or anything, or?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
Mostly are.
Do you have a commitment this week or?
What's that?
Thirty-first is the graduation.
Yes.
Okay.
I have admission day on my calendar, I don't even know what that is.
Ascension day. Ascension, that's a religious.
Sure. I can't, I just haven't brought them yet, they're sent it home on my desk. Thirtieth then? Thirtieth then, if, now, we can change it, so. How about we do thirtieth at six thirty, is that okay still? All right. I don't care on the time, it's up to whoever, everybody gets off work. Wanna do five thirty?
Six would be more.
How about we compromise and do six then?
Yeah.
Normally, they don't run until ten thirty, and I, I promise that, normally, they do not, do not.
Six o'clock, though?
Six o'clock, yes. New committees, I didn't get that completed yet, so give me, give me the weekend, there's still a couple of you I need to talk to, and then, then we'll finish that up over the weekend. And then, committee reports, personnel, we didn't have anything. Planning, I don't even know what all we covered, planning buff facilities?
I'd have to, I'd have to look, I'm sorry, we covered, I think, a lot. Oh, big thing was getting a presentation about water tower project, and kind of giving us a lay of where we are with our current water tower, and how the system works, and how any improvements might affect the system, and just kind of a, it was kind of a baseline education on just how that works, from the wells to your tap, so. Something that's probably in the future, and that's kind of the big, we talked about a lot of stuff, but that's probably the biggest thing.
Public protection, you, one of the chiefs, wanna run with what you have there? How'd you arm wrestle, who goes first?
First stage in our call line for the month of April, attention on the rural fires, as described. We've selected runs of two hundred and fifty of the greater forty, paid so far, for over eighteen, close to nineteen thousand dollars. I'd like to thank, too, Mike Ressler, he does a lot of work, would take him every day, does a great job.
He's usually here, if he's not here?
Also, the fire department's gonna have a, everybody pork chop cookout, make some shit at the corner of Main and Vantelli, and it'd be live. So, I've known him, he's been a long time, before we bring him back. Also, the fire department, the police department, Tim and I are kind of working on a little house, where we shoot the perfume, and just kind of open up the public meeting area, and also have applications on hand for anybody that might be interested in either department. And, just want to give out the fire department, like, to thank the outgoing trustees for your support, for working with you, and welcome new ones for, for working with you.
One question, what?
I was just gonna say, I like the bullet print, it's way easier to read than the rest of the tapes.
What, the seventy-five dollars you charge for fire coverage in a rural area, is that low, in your opinion?
Compared to the way that other places do it, I mean, like the city of Jacksonville is based on.
Based on your assessed value of your house?
Yeah, I mean, years ago, it was fifty, fifty dollars a year, it'd be around seventy-five, whatever you go.
What we've looked into, though, and the issue we have, is with the neighboring department having the fire district, it's getting harder and harder to do, so what we need to do is just look at creating our own fire district, that's what we've talked about with your partner and fire chief, because it's getting to where it's just harder to get them to purchase them. They're basically inside a different fire district.
Right.
And it's from a farther away, the fire department, so. There's, there's things we can do, it's just a bunch of legal stuff to do it, so. So, that seventy-five dollars, is that just for, like, they are your customer, and then you charge after the fire, or that?
Yeah, so they, the seventy-five dollars guaranteed are fire members of them. And actually, if they were to have a fire, figure the front, I mean, we can charge X amount of dollars for the original call, and per man, per hour, out of that. So, we, if they had a fire, we'll send the bill after fire for that.
To recover your costs?
Yes.
Okay.
You said ten thirty, the man and mandate?
Yes, yes.
Are you gonna have something on your Facebook that we can share?
Yeah.
When you do a mutual aid, do you, do we, you, however you want to say it?
So, we, if we were called for mutual aid, say, Woodson requests a mutual aid, we won't bill them, because, you know, their request's not helped. I mean, not saying that in the future we can, but it's never been done that way.
So, in that case, if Woodson requests our aid, can we bill Woodson?
No, I mean, that's just a mutual agreement where we all help each other out, you know, the same as, you know, Timbo and Al Jacksonville, or?
Okay.
Something like that, yeah.
Well, I think there's a point there, we understand mutual aid and helping each other and all that, but I think we need to be compensated for the expenses we concur doing that, you know?
It's definitely, you know, we can definitely look into it and see what we can.
You could, I mean, it just depends on whether their insurance is gonna pay for it.
Right.
Because that's ultimately who's gonna pay for it.
Sometimes their homeowners, you just pay us directly out of pocket, and we'll turn it into their insurance. I mean, that's, that's on many of the teams, which they won't go with it.
That's where the fire district comes in, because that'd be assessed on the property taxes, and it's just automatic, because everybody inside the fire district would then pay, the assessment on their taxes would go straight to our general fund, which would go to our fire department, so.
Do you have a sense how that, does that equal out, I mean, one way or the other? Does South Jacksonville do mutual aid than the surrounding communities? You don't understand, well, I mean, do you keep any data on, say, like, how many mutual aid calls you make to Woodson? And then, how many where they would assist us?
Yeah.
And it's probably balanced more in their favor, we assist them more often?
Yeah, I'd say so.
So.
With, with Woodson, you know, not seeing them at the other departments, I mean, we have a mutually agreed automatic.
So, we'd probably provide more mutual aid than the smaller towns do to us. I mean, I'm taking Jacksonville out of the equation, but.
Pretty well centrally located, where we're pretty in the middle of much of the surrounding departments, that.
But we'll receive a lot from Jacksonville as well, so.
Right, actually, we do, I mean, they help us out a lot, and that's very nice.
So, if you look at it total, not, not just one department, if you look at it total, I'd say it probably about equals out.
Yeah.
Any other questions, if not, we'll move on to our police.
Oh, congratulations about your article on the source.
Oh, thank you.
It was nicely written.
You'll find this hard to believe, but I have nothing to add to my report, however, well, I have to answer this.
Write it down, Eric.
Chief, I wanted to ask you about McGruff, you talked about going to South School.
Uh-huh.
And I thought, several months ago, you were talking about maybe, like, getting, not totally getting rid of McGruff, but scaling back, perhaps, so what are your thoughts on McGruff and the program now?
So, what we did, probably a year, or maybe a little over a year ago, we turned that program over to the city.
Okay.
As far as the suit, now, we still do McGruff details, we work in conjunction with the city, it's Lauren Hamilton or somebody, and the suit. So, that's what we did at South School, we just teamed up with JPD, and did the presentation at the school. Same thing, really, with CPA, that's part of the McGruff program, when we did the DUI simulator. So, we're still fifty percent involved in, what we found ourselves, where we were extremely limited in manpower, and being able to keep the, as many requests that came in for it. So, we've kind of split the program in half, where it's still alive, because it was about dead, and then it came in. So, the program's still alive, JPD services it much better with their manpower than we do, and we assist them.
Okay, but I remember looking at your storeroom, and you had showed me there was a lot of stuff in there, so did you give that to?
We did.
The city? Okay.
We did, we kept some of it, because we still do a few of those things on our own at South School. So, we did keep some of it, but the majority of it went to them.
Okay, great.
And the South Jacksonville still owns, because that suit's a five thousand dollar suit, there's two of them actually. So, the village still owns that property, or the police department, it's still, still there, it's just on loan to the city. The trailers and everything else, the physical stuff, stayed with us.
Okay, thank you.
Finance?
We have an action item under signatories.
And the TIF, we cover that.
The TIF. And the TIF will be coming up under an action item. Did we miss anything? That you brought up on, twenty eight?
Who?
We talked about the CD renewal.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
It was our opinion to keep it where it's at, correct?
To keep all the CDs that are at F and B, at F and B, and to move the one that's at Jacksonville Savings, to Prairie State, which was part of the proposal, but the board accepted.
And we had it for two point two five, is that right?
From one year ago.
You couldn't get them higher.
I tried, I tried to get that two point five, but it just didn't. Yes, it was.
And then, parks and tourism, we talked about the grants that are on the action items, other than that, we didn't have anything else?
Did we ever make up a, or suggestion on the rock, not the rock, but the sign?
I believe we were gonna talk about more once we made up committees and had somebody chase that ball.
Most what?
So, unless you wanna run with it.
I've got enough rocks.
I, I figured. I know there were some names thrown out, and I don't know, I don't remember who said what, so, for the, the places that, to those, those rocks, I don't know.
I think it's, Jackson.
I think so, but we'll get to that when we get the committees lined out. All right, signatories. Be myself, the clerk, the treasurer, trustee samples, and then, either John or Tim, just for the general checking.
I would suggest maybe John, because of the example you gave with the postage.
That's fine by me.
That makes sense?
So, myself, Tiffany, Megan, and Dick, on, as regular signatories, and John for the general.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
And it takes two for every?
Takes two for every check. We don't have any checking that's.
No, go right in.
I'm sorry, this is only for the new accounts that just opened at Prairie State Bank, so everybody aware of that, right?
Yes.
Right.
Hold on, new accounts at Prairie State, right?
So, I'll make that motion.
A second.
I'll second it. You wait while we're here.
I gotta get used to the voice of them, all right, ready?
Rule call, please.
All right. Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Chris Norris? Oh, my gosh. Todd Warwick?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
And then, we need to move our July regular meeting back one day, from the third to the second. That'll be?
Tuesday? Mm-hmm.
Correct. Motion to move that meeting.
You said the third was a holiday also, what's that all about, July third?
So, the third is really, since the fourth's the holiday, most people celebrate on the third.
Don't have, don't have, okay, okay.
So, most people move.
Okay, I thought, I thought we had a new holiday, I wasn't aware.
Motion to move that meeting to the second, then?
Paula made the motion.
Oh, David, sorry, I didn't.
I'll make the motion.
A second?
Second.
Rule call, please.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Todd Warwick?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, and for the TIF application, this for sleep-in, for a property tax reimbursement, a motion to approve a percentage?
I'll make a motion to approve fifty percent.
A second for that motion?
Second.
Rule call, please.
Todd Warwick?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
No.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Great, and for the South Main billboard, a motion to approve Morgan County Fair Board to use the billboard from tomorrow until the conclusion of the Morgan County Fair.
Have they submitted any?
Pending, pending approval of an image, so no.
Okay, I, I didn't know where they were at on this.
No.
I'll make that motion as pending approval of what they want to come out.
A second?
I'll second that.
Rule call, please. Yes, yeah, number three's out there, sorry.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Warwick?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
So, what, hold on, what number was that?
That was, just did five, it weren't six, I don't know. Okay. The fire department residency requirements, change those to a five-mile radius. Motion to that effect?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Rule call, please.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Warwick?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, ambulance rates. Basic life support, an increase of twenty-five dollars. Advanced life support, no increase, mileage, an increase of three dollars per mile, oxygen, zero increase, IVs, fifteen-dollar increase. Lusometer, did I pronounce that right?
Glutal, glutal meter.
Glutal meter, okay, I didn't, I didn't get close. Twenty-five dollar increase. Lead EKG?
Four lead.
Four lead, okay. Zero increase, you guys all got these, right? Twelve lead EKG, twenty-five dollar increase, incubation, three hundred dollar increase.
Intubation.
Incubation, what did I say?
Intubation.
Intubation, oh, intubation, yes.
No, incubation.
Three hundred dollar increase, CPR, two hundred dollar increase, spinal immobilization, seventy-five dollar increase, King Airway, two hundred and fifty dollar increase, IO, what's an IO?
That's an EROPUS, an IV.
IV.
Two hundred and fifty dollar increase, air evac transports, two hundred dollar increase, coroner transports, hundred dollar increase, user of transport with the use of dextrose, twenty-five dollar increase. A motion to approve these ambulance billing rates adjustments.
Discussion first, this is what? Life star, this is what they charge?
Some of those things, they do not charge for at all.
Okay.
But, you talk to our billing company, and they, that's the average rate, is that, rest of services, ambulance services they use, is so. We might as well, if we can bill for it, not saying we'll get paid, you know?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, but the main ones are the things with life.
I'll make that motion.
Rule call, please.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Warwick?
Don, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
After-prom donation, this is one we already discussed, and they already got the checks, this is formality of a hundred dollars. After prom donation, this is the one we already discussed, and they already got the checks, this is formality of a hundred dollar increase to their donation. Motion to approve that hundred dollars.
So moved?
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Dick Sample?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Uh, motion to sell our nineteen eighty-nine Chevrolet dump truck, and the last four of the VIN is six six nine five, is this, uh, the, tell me the condition of this one?
It, it's the old red one that was retired.
Is it?
It's maybe quite a bit.
That's what I was thinking, it's kind of a jumper.
Yeah, that's almost.
Exactly, now, is that the one, that's not the one you wanted to scrap, or is that, okay, that's what I was asking, that's what I was gonna go with.
That one was scrapped last year, this.
That's what I thought.
This one just go on iTunes, eBay, whatever.
Okay, that's what I thought. Alright, motion to approve that ordinance to sell that dump truck?
So moved.
Second?
Second?
Roll call, please.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Dick Sample?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Alright, tourism grant for the Morgan County Fair, I'd like to do these in three separate ones, please, so if we could do, since they asked for a different amount for each one. So for the rodeo. They asked for ten thousand dollars for the rodeo.
I'll make a motion for ten thousand dollars.
Second it.
Discussion, okay, I want it to be perfectly clear that I work, I mow the grass out to the fairgrounds, if you wanna call this work, but. And I have one share of stock in the Morgan County Fair, and the only thing I get out of this free is a free meal, which we all do, stockholders. In January for the year, but I want total disclosure that, that I do work for the Morgan County Fair in, in the fact of mowing grass. Now, lawyer, is that, should I absolve myself or, or whatever?
It's entirely up to you, you just made your disclosure, you can certainly abstain.
Okay.
Is the, uh, that's, uh, correct me if I'm, I'm asking this from my own, uh, knowledge here, Morgan County Fair, you say you own a shareholder or your stock, it's, it's a nonprofit entity.
It's a nonprofit thing, but they, I don't know why they ever set it up for shares, I inherited a share from my mother and father, who are both deceased. Um, it pays absolutely no dividends whatsoever, I think it was done for some legal purposes to have a corporation out there or something, I don't know.
I didn't even know they had shares.
That's neither did I, that's, that's where my curiosity came from.
I think there's a hundred shares, I think that's what the.
Wow, look at you. You're special, one hundred.
So, but I just wanted to make that known, so everybody knows.
So then you abstain on all three of them, because I'm gonna abstain on the, because I already made the public statement that I volunteer for Main Street, that's the next one, yeah. Then we're doing the same thing.
It's cleaner if you abstain.
Cleaner, yeah.
Yeah, let's do it, okay.
A second then?
And that was for the ten thousand for the rodeo?
For the rodeo, yes. Uh, she made the.
I made the motion, yes.
He made the motion, and Todd seconded it, correct?
Alright, Todd Ward?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Sample?
Ten thousand dollars for the demolition derby?
Yes, I'll make that motion for ten thousand dollars.
A second?
Second.
Jason, that was Jason, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys sounded alike.
Jason Hill?
We don't look alike.
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Sample?
Abstination.
That's not the word.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
I'm safe.
Ten thousand dollars for the truck tractor pull?
I'll make that motion, ten thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, can I ask you a question as a citizen, what is the, um, I haven't been at a recent meeting, so I'm just curious, that's thirty thousand dollars, I know it's in our tourism grant situation, but. Why are, why, what's the deal on the ten thousand dollars piece, that's thirty thousand dollars?
Well, I, I will answer that after the meeting, we're already well into the meeting, so.
Alright, I'm curious.
Was, you have a motion, do we have a second yet?
Yes. Did, I don't know if I said.
I thought there was a second.
Yeah, he's second.
Okay.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Sample?
Abstination.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Rob, is that a word, abstinence?
I think he meant abstinence.
Abstinence, yeah, that's a different thing.
That's where I was thinking, okay, tourism grant for the Main Street concert sponsorship. And they asked for five thousand to fifteen thousand, so.
I'll make the motion for the now five thousand.
Five thousand?
Yes.
And again, tourism grant, this is from the, uh, tourism fund.
Dick Sample?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Abstination.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Any old business? Any new business?
Yes. I'd like to do a little research on this, I think this is the best program I've seen in a long time, with free meals.
Me too, me too.
And, we're talking about spending a few bucks for kids, which I have no problem doing whatsoever, but I, I think we could afford. Or I'm, I'm going to propose that we look into the matter of providing free water to these kids, and, I don't know, we talking forty, fifty bottles, uh, a day, so. Two or three hundred bottles a, a week?
Out of general fund?
Before we give them water, though, let's find out what they need, because if they're getting, if they're getting grants for water, let's see if, I mean, they might, you know.
So something, yeah.
Do you wanna set up a small committee for this, because I will help with this, because I have a lot of resources for this.
That's up, discussing here, just the sound.
I don't have any issue with looking, we can look into, uh, because we have, we have wiggle room in our general fund for donations anyway, so, we just, it doesn't have to be water, I mean, if that's what they need, that's great, I mean.
Yeah.
We can.
And there's, I can't think of anything better to give them than free water.
Yeah. So, yeah, find something they need and buy it.
And this starts June, right, so we could talk about it at our committee meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and then pass something if we have to.
And if we run into something that, I'm gonna say Buckwax, that, that's where I buy water for the gun club, two dollars for a gun.
Yeah.
Jen, what do you sell water for?
Um, I'm trying to think.
Two bucks, two and a half, something?
Yeah, because the village buys it from.
It's gone up a little bit, but four something dollars, and I'm willing for that, I will donate.
There you go, I mean, you got. It's for kids, it's for good cause.
Yeah, it's great.
Done, you know, and.
So can we talk about it more?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah, I was actually thinking that too, when, when they were doing that, that's something I'd love to be involved with, so.
Yeah, I agree, this is awesome.
Somebody needs to be.
Motion to, uh, abstain.
How about a adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Okay.
So abstination, is our new word.